We're gonna go ahead and start the study session. We have Councilmember Huddleston is on the line. And Councilmember Bedillon is running just a little bit late. He's on the freeway, stuck in that traffic. So we'll go ahead and start. So let's see, Larry, it looks like we have the Museum of Casa Grande first.
That's correct, Madam Mayor. We continuing our presentations and overview of our partnerships. We do have the Museum of Casa Grande on the agenda today. And I believe Michael will be here to give a presentation. It looks like he's got a few of his board members in the audience as well.
Hello, thank you for having me. I'm Michael Serrada. I'm the Director at the Museum of Casa Grande. Let's see. So first, I'll just tell you about the Museum of Casa Grande. The museum was founded in 1964. It has preserved the history and heritage of the Casa Grande Valley for over 60 years. And the main museum property is 42,000 square feet. Our mission is to preserve, interpret, and disseminate the history of the Casa Grande region. And our vision is to curate collections and exhibits that celebrate our diverse heritage, to provide inspirational, educational, and public history programs, and to foster cultural experience and education through exhibits, events, and programs. I'm gonna talk a little bit about our visitors, our educational programs. So our admission prices are $7 for adults and $6 for seniors. Children are always free. We try and have the museum be an affordable, family-friendly option for educational entertainment. As for our educational programming, we have school tours and educational outreach, which are both free. We will go to schools. We have schools visit the museum. There's no charge for students or teachers. We visit schools on career days. We visit senior living communities. We have homeschool, private school, public school. And we even do events in Phoenix and the greater valley. We have people reach out to us. We've done events in Mesa, Chandler, Phoenix. We have the speaker series, History Speaks. That is a free monthly speaker series provided by the Museum of Casa Grande and held at the Dorothy Powell Senior Center. It provides engaging, interactive, and educational lectures of historical interest. This is done in a partnership between Arizona Humanities, the Senior Center, and the Museum of Casa Grande. As for our exhibits, our exhibits convey the diverse cultural heritage of the Casa Grande region as an integral part of Arizona. The museum continues to strive towards an inclusive and integrated history of the many cultures that have developed the city as we know it today. The museum has nearly 18,000 artifacts and 24,000 photographs and documents that focus on the Casa Grande Valley. As for the specifics of our exhibits, we have an exhibit wall with Sonoran animals, gourds, western guns, rodeos, the five Cs of Arizona, Casa Grande architecture and geology of the region. Our native exhibit, we have artifacts, some of which are nearly 2,000 years old, pottery, jewelry, projectile points, and photos. And that exhibit was put together in a partnership with the Gila River Indian Community. We have railroad exhibits with models, signage, and three functioning Morse code machines. We have a mining exhibit with a functioning mine car, mining equipment, and signage. We have a mid-century exhibit with office equipment, a department store display, and a video on 1950s design. We have a banking exhibit with an original bank safe, an office desk, and the bank teller cage that was used. In our military exhibit, we have representation from all of the major wars, starting with the Civil War. We have a scabbard going up to modern wars, modern conflicts. We have World War I, World War II, Korean War. We have uniforms, equipment, a video playing, and photos of the Korean War. In our medical exhibit, we have surgical tools, medical devices, doctor biographies, and antique medicine containers. Our police exhibit has uniforms, electronic devices, and badges. Our fire exhibit has uniforms, fire extinguishers, and the first three fire trucks in Casa Grande, most widely known as Engine Number One, 1929 La France. And then offsite, we have two changing galleries, one being at the City Finance and Administration Building, and the other being at the Casa Grande Airport. As for the other buildings on our property, we have Heritage Hall, which was the builder and stonemason was Michael Sullivan. The construction was completed in 1926. The museum opened, and Heritage Hall was placed on the National Register of Historic Places in 1978. We have the Rebecca Dallas Schoolhouse, which is the photo to the side, the white schoolhouse. The Rebecca Dallas Schoolhouse, Rebecca Dallas was the schoolteacher of the South Side Colored Grammar School in 1939, where she taught between 50 and 70 K through eight students at one time. We've had a lot of events involving the schoolhouse. We had NAACP events in the past. Then we have Treckle Barn. Don Treckle moved to the Casa Grande Valley in 1917. Our barn is a reproduction of a barn that was on their property. Next, I just want to mention our Weaver Pioneer Cemetery. The Weaver Pioneer Cemetery is 35,500 square feet. It contains the remains of the members of the Weaver family, extended relative, and close friends. The cemetery was deeded to the museum by the Weaver family in 2006 in order to preserve it as a historic site. The earliest burial in Weaver was in 1889, and it's of one-year-old John Earl Weaver. And now, this is about some of the research we do. Our archives contain records, photos, maps, artifacts, audiovisual materials of historic lands, properties, and family histories. Materials are maintained and made available to the public. We have facilitated research with reporters, writers, publishers, specialists, and scholars by providing access to collections as well as assistance with research. In many instances, we are the only access to primary source materials for their research. Next is our networking and community. We support local organizations and provide a venue for local history, the arts, and humanities. We continue to work with Main Street, the Chamber of Commerce, local farms, local nonprofits, and local businesses to increase awareness and participate in community events. As some examples, four of the signs in the Neon Sign Park are on permanent loan from the Museum of Casa Grande. The Plain Air Event has been hosted at the museum site for the last few years. We are currently doing a project with Art Mobile and the Arizona Commission of the Arts. We are their research partner for the project. And we're also currently working with Billy Davis of the Arts and Culture Commission on planning a Juneteenth celebration featuring the Rebecca Dallas Schoolhouse. And as for specifically with the city of Casa Grande, we've done projects with the Vista Grande Library, the other public schools, Dorothy Powell Senior Center, the Casa Grande Airport, the Arts and Culture Commission, and the Historic Preservation Commission. These are just some of the events that we do, our three primary ones. The museum held its fifth annual Stakes and Stories fundraiser on March 1st. In the past, we've had speakers such as the Junior Storytellers, Steve Miller, Bob Brutenell, Rick O'Neil, Janet Henness, Jean Lehman, and much more. Having it coincide with the grant cycle, we've been having our opening event for the season be a Hispanic Heritage Day through a grant with the Arts and Culture Commission. And we've been closing our season out with a Family Farm Festival, where we have a petting zoo and crafts and things like that for families. And then last, I just wanted to talk about our volunteers, our board, and our staff members. So we are grateful to have a core group of dedicated volunteers who are instrumental to the day-to-day operations of the museum. Last year, volunteers donated over 2,400 hours to the Museum of Casa Grande. Just as a reminder, all the departments of the museum are manned by staff and volunteers. I'm the only full-time staff member, and we have one part-time staff member. Everything else is run by volunteers. So that includes tours, marketing, IT, membership, minor maintenance projects, the gift shop, grant writing, volunteer recruitment, fundraising, and much more. I have listed up here some of our, all of our board members, the staff, and our core volunteers. We have some board members here today, if you would like to stand. No? More convincing? So we have, let's see, Kathy Kenyon, Brett Benedict, Roger Hooper, and Dwayne Itel here today. And I would like to give two special kind of shout-outs. One for Erin Henderson, she's the part-time museum coordinator. She does mostly our membership and our volunteer recruitment, things like that. And also, a very special shout-out to Arlo Cairo, she's the museum's archivist. She knows more about this town than anyone I've ever met in my life. We regularly have people that are third generation, born and raised here, and she will give them information they never knew they needed, whether they like it or not. I'm almost at the end here. So these are just some real reviews that we have. I know they're probably not easy to read on the screen. But we have 139 Google reviews, 112 of those are five-star reviews. Something that we really appreciate is one of our most common compliments we get after people walk through the museum is they say, "I've been to a lot of museums. I thought this was just gonna be a small, local historical society. Everything is so professionally done. Your exhibits are explained so well. Everything is so great. You guys are so knowledgeable." Usually not me, but someone, you know, the volunteers. And we really like to hear that, you know? We get a lot of positive reviews. If you see, a lot of these are actually commenting on how knowledgeable the volunteer was, how helpful they were, things like that. And then, the last few slides, I just put in some photos that people had posted publicly on Google of random people enjoying our museum. They're not anyone in particular, they're just people that tag themselves as visitors of the museum.
If you tell me you've never been to the museum.
Uh-oh.
At least I admitted. Now, and it's amazing, over the weekend, my brother and sister, they put up some articles, stuff that they found at the museum themselves and my father. And so, but I want to thank you for all the work y'all do, and I'll be there soon.
That sounds good. And that's actually a very common comment that we get, is I'll talk to somebody, you know, someone in the community, and they say, "I haven't been to the museum since a field trip in third grade." So unless they were forced to come, they don't think to come. And then they end up coming to visit us, you know? They say, "Oh, I'll come by and see you." And they go, "Man, I don't know what I was missing out on. This is crazy. I didn't know it was so nice." So, we're always glad to hear that too, but you have to eventually come.
That's right.
I'll say, I came as a teacher. We took our students on a field trip. And then I came back with my own kids, just because I was so impressed with it. And then we had you come to a career day at McCartney Ranch when I was there. And I just feel like you do a great job with the exhibits that you have and the program. So, very well done.
Thank you very much.
Make sure you get it over there.
Yeah, I will.
I know, I must admit, I went with my kids when they were in school. You know, as a Girl Scout leader, and we went, and, you know, at the school. So, but I haven't been there in a while, so definitely have to, so. But no, Michael, thank you, and thank you to the board. Thank you for all being here today, and just your dedication, you know, to serving on this board. It is so important for us to understand and, you know, the history of our community. But I have a big question for you. This is really important. So, how do you say it, Casa Grande? I hear you saying Casa Grande, but I don't know. When it started, when the city started.
So, I've actually been interviewed on TV for Tucson twice, and it's on YouTube. And my official explanation is that it would have been said with a Spanish accent because it was originally named after the site, which was found by Father Quino. And although he was from Italy, it was a Spanish-speaking area, and he would have said it like Casa Grande. So, but I also say that I am not in any position to ever correct anyone the way they say it. And if I'm around people enough, I'll just say it however they say it. We have the Casa Grande, and, you know, however people want to say it. I've never corrected somebody for it, but we do have people ask a lot.
I know, okay. Thank you, go ahead, man.
Just come to the museum, right? No matter how you say it.
Exactly.
I wanted to compliment Michael too. I never met him, and he sent us an email about the storyteller, and so I couldn't make it. It was inclement weather that day.
No, it was.
But I sent him an email back, and I said, "Well, some details." And he runs me down at the gas station, like, we see each other, he's like, "Hey, I got your information. You got a good one right there, guys." He's on it, so.
He replied to my email, and it was at the very end of the day, and so I didn't have time. And then I was leaving, I went to the gas station, I was like, "Yeah, that's the guy that just emailed." Because we don't know each other very well, but we met before. So I was like, "I think that's mad." I was like, "I'll just go ask him." So I went up, and I said, "Hey, did you just email me a minute ago about the Stakes and Stories fundraiser?" And he goes, "Yeah." And I said, "I will email you first thing." And he was like, "No problem."
And he did, yeah, so, very cool.
That's great about a smaller community, right? Michael, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Okay, so next, Larry, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, as we prepare for our next presentation, I had mentioned early on, as we started this review of partnerships, that we would be allocating additional time to certain organizations. And tonight, we actually have the Chamber of Commerce, Casa Grande Chamber of Commerce, who's going to be making, Renee and her team will be making a presentation. But because we have an agreement with them to serve as our destination marketing organization, I thought it would be a good opportunity to put the two together. And so, with no further ado, I will invite Renee, I assume she's leading, and Eric to the podium. Perfect.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you, we're happy to be here. Thank you for having us. Can you hear me?
Yes.
For those of you who have, I think we've all met, but I'm Renee Lusson Bennett, the Executive Director at the Chamber, and this is Eric Snyder. He is the Marketing and Tourism Manager. And he joined us just...
August.
August. And he took the baton and ran with it. He's doing an awesome job with the organization. So I am going to talk about, uh-oh, which one is it? Sweet. I'm gonna talk about the Chamber of Commerce first, because we've been around for 100 years, and then how we kind of got into the tourism role, and hope that you like our story. The Casa Grande Chamber of Commerce was incorporated, incorporated, it was actually founded in 1920. So, over 100 years old, and, but incorporated in 1935. We are a 501(c)(6) nonprofit organization, and we're a membership organization organized by the local business leaders at that time. We currently serve 484 members, and that is as of last December. And 79% of them are under 100 employees, and when you dig down to 55%, they're 20 or fewer. So when you think about who are our customers, they're small business members. Our mission statement is building a greater Casa Grande. And our vision statement is the Casa Grande Chamber of Commerce as the voice of business leads, promotes, and develops opportunities for the success of our members and the community. And we're proud of the work we've done in this arena all these years. We are, we have a directing board of members. They are all representatives of Chamber business members. So, in the grand scheme of things, the Chamber is run by the voice of the member. Serving us, oh, I'm sorry, my tabs didn't stick, but we are represented by, I just kind of want to run through some, or you can all read them and note their names. However, we do have Lisa Fitzgibbons representing the city to the Chamber, which is traditional with our board leadership. And we also have a past board member and board chair with Mr. Matt Herman here. So thank you both for serving the Chamber. We are a catalyst for business growth. We provide programs for members to promote their business and to build their network. That's basically what we're about, and we'll talk about the things we do to help with that. But we provide business referral services, not only linking customers to potential business service providers through our website, but opportunities for those members to get to build their network with each other, not only to serve each others as customers and service providers, but also as referral network. And we refer from our office all the time, and refer to that last presenter all the time, and send people over there, so we're glad that they're doing so well. We produce and distribute business referral guides, 14,000 community guides just started, just hit the ground this year, last year, I'm sorry, they were distributed in 2024. We have 10,000 this year. Last year, we had 10,000 visitor guides. And this was a result of having 20,000 big books that people coming in for a weekend didn't really want or need. So we kind of targeted the different visitor populations and the community guides that we're so proud to hand out every year at our annual dinner, are to give to those people who are winter residents, our new residents, people who are wanting to move here and asking for new resident information. But it has a list of all of our members in the books, like a little phone book. This past year, we organized and hosted five Business After Hours networking events. 138 total member attendance to those five events. Nine Business After Hours networking events. You'll hear that two other things are different. One, unfortunately, was canceled. We were there, but there was an accident, and it was at the Garnet, and they lost their power. And we were like, "Uh-oh." And it was getting really hot, it was in the heart of the heat of the summer. So we shouted at the door and thanked everyone for coming and sent them away so that they could preserve their electricity for their residents. So we're rescheduling them. But also, one of our annual events is considered a Business After Hours event. So at the nine Business After Hours, we served 602 total member attendees. We co-host the November After Hours with the Greatest of Grande event, which is really neat because it's members and non-members. Although, if you look through the list, a lot of them are members. Coincidence? I think not. They, that is a really fun event, and it showcases our Neon Sign Park. And then the business showcase, which is an after-hours event, is a mixer for an hour, and then it's an expo for an hour and a half. And it's very well attended, and we sell out on our tables within a few weeks. We had 208 attendees to that. We convene. We provide platforms for like-minded members to gather for meaningful dialogue and to build their business network. So, starting out with our Business Ambassadors Committee. That is a group of individuals that volunteer on behalf of the Chamber to welcome new members and make them feel comfortable, to encourage them to be like a first-time buddy at our event. And to also volunteer to welcome and greet members at events, sell 50/50 tickets, and help with other things, they're fantastic. And, you know, while they're doing their role as an ambassador, they're also being their own brand champion. But I'll tell you, all of them have a fun little neon name tag that says who they are and who they work for. The Government Affairs Committee, oh, by the way, Ambassador's meets monthly, and we have an average of 15 members. Government Affairs Committee meets 11 out of 12 months. We go dark for July. And it is to actively monitor, inform, and influence members about public policy issues that impact the local business climate. It's a members-only group, most of them are. And we meet, we have 24 to 26 members, and we've been able to maintain the high attendance because we meet hybrid and have been doing so since 2020. We used to have, way back in the day, when I first started working for my former employer, there was a healthcare roundtable, which kind of just stopped meeting because of lack of engagement. And some of the healthcare members said, "Wouldn't it be neat if we had an activity that we could all get together and talk about things related to healthcare?" And I said, "Hey, we used to have this thing called a healthcare roundtable. Should we try and bring it back?" And board was... And I said, hey, we used to have this thing called a healthcare roundtable. Should we try and bring it back? And board was supportive of it, and we convened, we were doing some after-hours networking. Instead, we're we're meeting from four to five because that fits better with everyone's schedules. And we're focusing on not just our first, which we had last year, but our second annual Casa Grande Love at Health and Wellness Fair. And we appreciate the City of Casa Grande for partnering with us last year and allowing us to host it at the Rec Center. And we'll be doing so again on October, Saturday, October 25th. So we're getting head start on planning so we can have more exhibitors, more health information for everyone in the family, and fun activities. And then we also developed a Young Professionals Network, and this is a newer initiative. And that is to convene individuals. And Matt once asked the question, are we too old to be in that? And he said, if you have to ask, you probably are. Forty years of age, under 40 years of age, to connect and exceed through mentoring, development, and relationship building. So we changed the platform a year ago where we meet quarterly for lunches. And we have some sponsorships, so it's a nominal fee passed on to the attendee. And we bring in different speakers identified by the group to bring in the next quarter. And then we ended our year with a fun mixer, so to speak, at Casa Collective and had a Casa Grande Bingo Night. And there were some tough questions. I learned a lot. And last but not least, we have big events where we convene people, but these are still, how many of you network at the annual dinner?
What's that dinner?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But a lot of people spend a lot of time networking at that, just as much as they go to see who is being celebrated and visit with each other. And we're really proud of how many years we've been having that event. We recognize the Chamber's accomplishments for the previous year, and we also recognize and celebrate outstanding individuals in four categories. We had 170 attendees. We actually get more registrations, but sometimes we have some attrition. We had four Biz Outlook luncheons, another opportunity to educate our members and bring topics to them that they ask for in their surveys. And then also give them an opportunity to network. And we had, in the four luncheons, 568 members attend. And fall golf is kind of limited to golf carts and holes. But we fill the course every year, and we have a handful of volunteers that help that event happen. And we always have great feedback from our players. We are a champion for stronger communities. So these are the three Cs of Chambers that we probably don't talk about enough. But we we celebrate our members every week in our newsletter. We welcome our new members and connect the reader to the member through the live links in our newsletter. We also put them, those Welcome Wednesday announcements on social media and connect people to them through our social media platforms. We do the same for our renewing members every week, every month in the newsletter the second week. Our Chamber supporters, 110% club, are celebrated in the third week. And we also love being able to participate in grand openings, ribbon cuttings, and groundbreaking and helping our members celebrate their milestones. Bagel House just happened last week. It smelled delicious, and they were open and busy and sold out of bagels on Sunday because there's a lot of chatter in all the groups. Through supporting businesses and community needs and community growth is another way we're a champion. We receive regular requests for letters of support. And just this year alone, and it's March, we've signed letters of support for funding, conservation, and management, adequate staffing at our local hospitals, and two different letters of support for two different grants related to the same project in a different way. And that is the I-10 Courts and Road Project. And we're always happy to do that. And the process for this typically goes through Government Affairs. They kind of vet and recommend approval and sign-on from the Board of Directors, but it goes through Government Affairs to Executive Committee to Board. That's our typical process. Anyway, this is your team. We have five full-time employees and two per DM. From left to right, Ken is our Member Engagement Manager. Laurie's per DM, she works part-time. Spearhead, if you like what you see written by some of us for the newsletter, it's possibly we didn't. But she writes those. She also works with the contributors for all of the content for both of our publications to get those stories from all of the different departments and organizations and things about Casa Grande. We love letting people know about in our community guide. Kylie Brown is our Events Coordinator. She's full-time. Cindy Andrews works mostly in the winter, twice a week, part-time, but she does work a little bit more in the summer. But she makes sure, like, when our visitors come in and all the brochure racks are full, it's because she keeps in touch with all of the places where those brochures come from and make sure we have them. And she also does a lot of office work for us as well, getting mailers out and the bills and thank you letters for members renewing their dues. To Cindy's right is Wendy Wallace. She's our Office Manager and does a great job keeping track of all of the dollars in and out. And then that's me and Eric. So if you're wondering who does all that stuff we talk about, it's just us. So we're almost to the transition for the tourism department. But I I've been trying to, I have to say, this isn't original to me, but I found it from another organization, and I made sure it reflected us. But since growing in our role with the city, you know, no matter what, our Board of Directors runs the Chamber, so to speak. They direct the high-level decisions for the Chamber of Commerce, and we all report to the membership. But also over to my left, so to speak, we have a tourism office now. And that tourism office just has a bit of a different dynamic. There is a tourism advisory group, and Eric will talk about that. But under the rest of the chart is everyone who works for the good of the organization and trying to make sure that we're executing all of the goals and action steps we have in place. Some accomplishments for 2024. I think it's a big deal that we rebranded. First, I don't know however, how many of you remember us being called Greater Casa Grande Chamber of Commerce? That was always a question that people would ask us, what does that mean? But when we connected with the tourism office and we are promoting Casa Grande in in a much larger way for inbound marketing and people outside of Casa Grande to think about visiting here, playing here, living here, that we wanted to connect our our look with the look of the tourism office. So we rebranded, and we aligned the colorful Casa Grande logo with all the activities conducted by the Chamber. We also, even though it was a tourism activity, it was all hands on deck. And we did plan and execute the inaugural Taco Taco Fest, Southwest Taco Fest. And despite the wind, we had almost 2,600 attendees. And everyone had a great time. We had 19 sponsors, almost break even. And look, there's a T in the word of even. And we we had a really heartfelt, in fact, it was a member and someone I used to work with at another employer who told me he had brought his family in to go to that event. And they thought it was so neat that Casa Grande put an event like this together for families to come to. So we were proud to really have that success. All right. And then we continue development and operation of the new tourism function. And looking forward, we will refine and improve communication of Chamber member value to our members. So there's going to be a focus more on our communication efforts to the community about the Chamber and through our members about the Chamber. And then refine and improve some of our current Chamber events to align with membership needs and wants. And then present in two weeks, the Second Annual Southwest Taco Fest and continued development of tourism operations. This is where I pass the pod.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hello.
So I've only been here for a little over, what, seven months ago? So if you don't know me, my name's Eric Snyder. I'm the, I was brought in August for the Tourism and Marketing Manager. I am a former ambassador. So when she was discussing ambassador through my other role at a title company, I was an ambassador for the Chamber for four, almost four years. So it kind of, and my previous career was hotel management. So when the position came on, I was like, huh, title, back to tourism. I think I'll go that way. So, yeah, it's, and it's been a great journey. Okay, so the vision statement of the Tourism Office is to steward experiences and attractions that strengthen our community and enhance our local economy. As Renee mentioned earlier, the Tourism Office has a tourism advisory group. It's not an actual Board of Directors, but it is an advisory group. And so we meet bimonthly, six times a year for 24/25. The list is up there, but we have Mindy Piper from the city is our tag.
Chairperson, right?
Yeah. Ash Patel with Southwest Hospitality Management, Chad Stranowski with Dell's Pizza, Heather Kennedy, the Public Information Officer here at the city, Holly Nash with the Main Street, Manny Manny M. with Quality Inn, Mr. Matt Herman, Council Member, City of Casa Grande, Mike Taylor of Robson Ranch, Richard Wilkie and Ryan Barrett, both City of Casa Grande Economic Development, Wendy Fields with Main State Suites, and Zoe Cooper with Kramer Media. So this 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 membership, this tag is is has a combination of hospitality, stakeholders, city employees, really everyone that would be involved in input on tourism and how to grow Casa Grande and how to market outside of Casa Grande. And yeah, I say Casa Grande too. So but how to market outside of it too, like Renee had mentioned earlier, to bring people either to visit, to winter reside, or to permanently live here. So that is the, that's the 20 this year's tag group. So giving you a little history of this. In August of 22 is when the Tourism Office applied through Visit Arizona Initiative to get a grant, $66,000. And part of it was to use for consulting for the planning session of the Tourism Office because it was brand new. So an outside consultant was brought in to develop a strategic plan and initiatives to put into place and and how to begin growing this Tourism Office from scratch. First billboard campaign along Interstate 10 was put out there, a rack card through Certified Folder Program. And the racks are placed at various locations, including Phoenix Airport, San Diego, Las Vegas, the Harry Reid Airport, and Phoenix Mesa Gateway. Began social media develop, social media digital marketing campaign. And we have a partnership with a local company that does that. And then, as you can see on the picture, that new monument sign at the Chamber Office was was purchased and put in. And that's all digital, so we can change it up and change up the the message that we want to provide to anybody walking by, driving by, or coming in.
Just a little place where we were there. We were in communications and developing a an agreement, and you'll see an update to that. But the opportunity was there to apply for these funds through the Arizona Office of Tourism. And we we were able to get, now we are, we are designated as a DMO, but there's an adestation that could be completed, and the city supported that and helped us with this. And we were able to kick this off early in our career as a Tourism Office. Sorry.
No, you're okay. But it was in 1995, roughly thereabouts, is when the office was designated as the Arizona Visitor Information Center, or AVIC. So the Chamber Office had been the AVIC for quite some time before it was designated as a DMO. And that's a, out in San Diego, and this was a social media post, a random social media post by somebody who said, hey, look, I'm out in the, at the San Diego Airport, and I see a brochure of Casa Grande. So we thought that we would throw that up there.
We've seen another one from Harry Reid Airport.
Yep.
So it was in September of 22 when the the city, we went into an agreement with the city and officially became the DMO, more commonly referred to as the Tourism Office. Sometimes I hear comments about like, oh, the Casa Grande DMO, or, you know, the Chamber of Commerce and the DMO Office. The DMO is an internal abbreviation and word used by the Arizona Office of Tourism. For all purposes for the public, we're a Tourism Office.
Yeah.
Because it's much easier to say Tourism Office and be done with it than a DMO and then, what's a DMO?
Well, it's also required by the Arizona Department of Revenue as well for the taxes.
To put it on there, yeah.
Yeah.
And then in January, they implemented and recruited a tourism staff member to fill a position in June of '23. That was not me. I just got here. We also implemented a memorandum of understanding with the Casa Grande Main Street for reimbursement of utility costs for the Neon Sign Park.
And landscape.
And landscape, thank you. In July of '23, they re- applied for the, our first year with the Arizona Office of Tourism Co-op Rule Co-op Co-op Program. And we received $28,000 in funds and purchased $56,000 in advertising, promotion, and software platforms. And that resulted in either a half-page or a full-page print display on 18 publications and distributed over to 60 different visitor centers in Arizona. And then as well as through that, when it says a platform, there's a platform we use called Bandwinko. And with that platform, we kicked off the Casa Grande Southwest Taco Trail, and that's a passport program. And what that was is residents or visitors could could go onto the website and view how many restaurants were there. And if they went to a specific restaurant and checked in, they had to have so many, I think it was eight check-ins. And then they would receive either a Taco Trail t-shirt from the Chamber or a gift card. So we had a lot of, a lot of different residents participate in that. I think that we were, there was over 200 different sign-ons to it, meaning they actually went to the site, downloaded the information, and utilized it. So and more to come on that because we'll be putting out another one. And then we also kicked off the Tourism Sponsorship Program. And in that, what that is, is that is at the, on our website, Experience Casa Grande website. And for any different programs in the area, they can actually apply for a sponsorship from the Tourism Office for whatever event they're they're holding. And and it it only requires a small amount. It requires that it is, the event is supporting tourism in one way or another. So it's bringing people in that will spend money at a restaurant, at a hotel, or anything like that. And that they are nonprofit. And so for last year, $4,000 was was put out to support the annual street fair, brought on by the Main Street, the Oktoberfest by the Rotary Club, and then also by the Rotary Club, the Pretzel Day Art Installation. And so far in this year alone, for the first three months, we, the celebre event from the Casa Grande Main Street, the MC Music Viva la Raza, the annual street fair, the annual toy parade put on by the Casa Grande Valley Elks Lodge, the Mike Survy Memorial Pro Classic, annual roping event, and then the upcoming Terminus Days, as well as the upcoming, another, the second Pretzel Day Art Installation expansion by the Rotary. So to date so far, $11,750 of sponsorship funds.
Yeah. And that started when, it's fun, the Chamber's fiscal year is January through December. But in this agreement, we track all of our activities for tourism, July through June, following the city's fiscal year. So this is since last July that we've expended the $11,750. So we're really glad that we're seeing this grow. And we we just have a kind of rubric we follow. It's for profit and nonprofit. For profits get a little less. That it's to promote local in Casa Grande and has a draw. And when you think of Oktoberfest, they're growing that to make this something that people want to come to from out of town. And that's something we can get our heads around. As well as the Pretzel Day, I don't know, Rotarians love finding things that Rotary does in other towns. So when people come here and that they're in Rotary and they they learn there's things to see, they'll go look at them. And also, it's a fun outside attraction, pretzels. Anyway, sorry.
So some of this is, we saw it on previous slides, but because we were talking about the tourism side now, we just, we included it in there just to reiterate for it. So the inaugural Southwest Taco Fest was kicked off. And at that event, we we had support from sponsors and community, 19 sponsors for $43,500 cash, and then we had $4,000 in in-kind trade donation. It was a break even was the financial outcome. Almost 2,600, and like Renee said, even with the And like Renee said, even with the high winds and stuff like that. I don't know how many of you were there, but it was, even with the high winds, it was successful. And everyone loved Roger Klein. We tried to get him back this year, but he was under contract with the Ostrich Festival. And then a couple pictures here, Roger Klein up there in the top left.
Those taco hats are so fun.
There's Matt with his taco hat.
Matt was so helpful to be our emcee for the evening and also present the best taco to the taco truck that won.
Nacho Mafia. Okay, so in June of '24, there was a, navigated some staff changing and a new staff member was onboarded in August of '24. And so then the, in July of '24 was again time for the AOT Co-op Rural Program. This time, we received $47,590 matching funds to purchase $95,000 in advertising, again, promotion and software. So far, we've done full and half, 19 different publications and again over the 60 visitor centers. We did a three-month billboard campaign in western Arizona. And then we're looking, the Mobile Passport Platform. So the Taco, Taco Trail 2.0 is coming as well as, and it may be on a future slide, but the Greatest of the Grande Platform is.
Forthcoming.
Forthcoming. And we've already talked to Kramer Media and they've already provided permission for us to contact the, the winners of the Greatest of the Grande and set up a program through that. We're, as you guys know, we're, the Second Annual Southwest Taco Fest is right around the corner. And thank you again for the city, for the partnership we have. It's going to be back at the Daylight Park. So far today, we have 24, actually, that increased. We have 26 sponsors now at $64,000 in cash and still 6,500 in-kind donation. So we're looking to continue growing that, continue growing the passport programs and the Greatest of the Grande program. Billboard campaigns, we're going to, we're looking at doing, getting a bit more aggressive towards the end of this fiscal year and the beginning of the '25, '26 fiscal year for billboard programs and updated rack cards.
In our strategic direction, there's more emphasis on, on looking at all of the events that are held in Casa Grande as well. So maybe the Electric Light Parade, putting together campaigns and efforts around the things that are being done by different community partners so we can, you know, amplify the message to come down to this event. And so we've got, we're working on that plan.
Fine.
Sometimes I just have to pipe in.
So yeah, the AOT Market Match Program for '25. We are continuing to look at, I'll briefly explain what the CTA is, but, and then also the dark sky community on what is involved with that. And we're in the area that we can officially become designated as a dark sky community. So more to come on that. The CTA program is, I learned of it when I went down to Tucson. There was a one-day event and it was geared towards travelers and CTAs down in the Tucson area. So I started digging around a little bit more. There's actually a program, Certified Tourism Ambassador Program. And it was started from a company out in Phoenix. And what it does is, is they come in and they were, will evaluate and research the history of the area and key attractions and key points of interest, put together in a study format to where then whoever's running the program, individuals can come in and take the one-day course and become a certified tourism ambassador for that city in that area. I have been working with Michelle Carpenter from the Pinal County Office and, because she was approached by them as well. And she has also her own Tourism Advisory Group through Pinal County. We're members of Eloy Kula, everyone from Pinal County that can come in. And so we're actually auditing one of the Tucson classes in April, so I'll have more information from that. But the, how the program works is you have a certain amount of people that are running the program in each city and area, and then anybody can come and take the course. So we're talking restaurant employees, hotel employees, city employees, anybody who wants to actually come and, and it's, it's a full-day course. And it basically, at the end of the day, you become certified because you know that much more about the city or the area you're in and you can talk about it a little better. So especially when it comes to hoteliers or people in restaurants and they get those questions and they're like, I don't know, you know, it's boring here, I'd go to Phoenix, you know? No, we want to train them and teach them what there is to do here and keep people here. So more to come on that, but that's, those are some of the stuff that we're looking forward to and seeing where it goes. Any questions from us?
Thank you, thank you very much. Any questions?
I had a comment since I was involved, but when I was chairman of the board, a lot of our focus that year was getting this Tourism DMO off the ground. And Renee did a lot of work on it, myself, a lot of other people too, of course. I mean, but we got it, so I'm really happy to see it. I know that it's hard because we talked about a lot, is it tourism, is it the Chamber? Well, it's both, but we just have to keep it balanced. But of course, so proud of the Taco Fest. I think the Tourism is becoming more, you know, visible in the community. So the Taco Fest, all the other activities. And I think it's important for everyone to know that the Tourism and Chamber also has this community calendar. So if any group is having an event, it's very important to call the Chamber and the Tourism and they'll put it on there for you and also help promote. I mean.
People can go do it themselves.
Yeah, because it's, it's not just promoting us outside of Casa, but even, Eric just made the right point, there's no thing to do here. There's a lot to do here. You just, we have to get it out to people that live here that, you know, everything that's going on, rodeos, you know, celebra, you guys hit a lot of them, and it's not just, you know, it's not just the Chamber events, it's all the events in town. So it's a very, it's a very neat program and it's just keep, keep growing. And we were fortunate to have Eric join because he had some Chamber experience, like he said before. So he knew a lot of the people, done a lot of the work. And so it was a really good benefit to, to our organization. Oh, I guess I'm not really in the organization, but I'm still a member, so.
You are.
You're in the Tourism Advisory Group.
You're a catch of the game.
Yeah. So, you know, I thank you. I thank you, yeah, I thank you for the work and I look forward to seeing it grow and really promoting all of our events in town and, and not, not to be also is giving grants to other organizations that are doing events, you know, including the Rotary Club, including Main Street, including, you know, so it's very neat. It's really helping our community grow and get the events going.
We just have to get the word out because, I mean, anyone go to the sponsorship program and put in the application and then we'll review it and see if they qualify. And then to your point, I mean, my vision is in five years that, that are the, the office, Experience Casa Grande, is the, is the go-to hub for all events and stuff where they know that, they want to know what's going on in the area to, doesn't matter who's putting it on.
Yeah.
They can go to Experience Casa Grande.
And also help coordinate, you know, hey, about this weekend, well, this weekend we've got all this stuff, but you know, maybe you want to think about the next weekend when there's not, you know, to.
Book a room.
Yeah. Book a room, exactly.
It'll happen, it'll happen. And you didn't ask this, but when people ask us how to say it, we say yes. We tell them, like Mike Sirota did, about the history of the name. And we also say, but what people who are born and raised here call it Casa Grand, I was kind of indoctrinated by Helen to call it Casa Grande, and it stuck. But when people come in, we never correct them. I do help them say some other names, like the county.
Yeah.
I have a question on the grants, and you talked about getting the word out and people are able to apply. Are you still, do you still have availability excepting applications for this fiscal year? Or will it be next year?
Yes, yes. And it is advertised, there's a promotion once a month in our newsletter, it's also out on social media, we get it out there. And it's funny because there's a couple of, couple of organizations that I've encouraged two years in a row and they're like, oh, we're just not ready yet. It's like, we can help you with what you need to do. So yeah, please encourage people.
And Renee, what is the, what is your budgeted dollar amount this year and is it getting, going up next year?
I hope so. I don't know what the budget is for the next fiscal year yet, but as soon as I know, I, we can put some more dollars that way. But we also have some left over from last year.
Okay.
So our budget was for $15,000. And, you know, when you're putting this together, you're like, hmm, who do I learn from? Let me call my friend at the county. And they had a larger budget, but they had a larger audience. And, and so we were like, okay, let's start it here at 15 and, and work to give it away. And we just asked that they, you know, fill out an application and let us know what they're going to do. And nonprofits do receive more benefit than for-profits and we're just happy to support them and see them go on.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other questions, comments? Thank you for everything you do.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You all are very busy, always out and about. Keeping me busy too with all the ribbon cuttings and everything else, so.
And we appreciate that, that you can make it to them. They certainly are fun. We had, Bagel House was still not officially open, but they had already scheduled their ribbon cutting, so we held it. And she sent me a text message, she called on Friday saying we will definitely be open tomorrow at 6:00 and we got a post out for them and, yeah. And a lot of buzz happened and that's what we love to see with our members and.
Yes.
And, you know, members and non-members use each other too, so we just really want to grow business here.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for all you do for the community.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I was wondering, since we have a few minutes, if I can spend just a few minutes discussing the financing component to perhaps even assist the new members of the council as well as the community on the, on the relationship between the city and the Chamber and the destination marketing, marketing organization. Obviously, prior to the City Council agreeing to approve an increase in the bed tax, the city of Casa Grande had been in a partnership with the, with the Casa Grande Chamber for marketing purposes. The funds that were being utilized and distributed to the Chamber specifically were coming from our general fund. When the bed tax was increased, that, that particular element of revenue stream is governed by state statutes. It is specifically utilized for marketing and tourism purposes to bring individuals into the community. And so I know that that sometimes becomes a bit difficult for individuals to understand, but the council will remember in the agreement that we entered into with the Chamber of Commerce to provide the DMO services, the tourism services. Ultimately, a number of tourism elements became a component of that agreement. And as such, the council will see those proposals as part of our budget process, but there's a delineation between the two, at least from a financial perspective, that's being driven by the statutory requirement of the bed tax revenues that we're generating that must be used on promotional opportunities. And for those existing council members that were on the council when we entered into that agreement, one of the key elements and, and obviously Renee and Eric did a nice job defining it was that it was, ultimately, we wanted to ensure that we gave organizations an opportunity to have access to some of those funds to market their events that are going on in, in the city. We also heard a little bit about the community calendar that has become a key component. They have an opportunity in that organization to promote events that perhaps the city would not have the ability to promote as a governmental entity and the like. And so again, I, at least in my mind, when you begin to understand how the funding is actually allocated and how it's driven, ultimately, you can better understand why we, why we try to separate the two, although it feels many times it's one organization.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thank you, Larry. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and close this study session and start up again at 7:00. Thank you.